Call the meeting to order. Will you bow your head as I pray? Dear Father, thank you on behalf of all who have gathered here today. Thank you for your many blessings. Thank you for the ability to be involved in such useful work and for the honor of bearing our civic responsibility. I pray for the protection of our police officers and emergency responders. Please keep them safe as they risk their lives in response to our calls for assistance. I pray for the protection of our highway workers. Please watch over them as they keep our town clean and neat. I pray for our mayor and our fellow council members. I'm asking that you would grant us the wisdom to govern in the best interest of our citizens, the confidence to do what is good and fitting for our town, and the ability to work together in harmony even when there's honest disagreement. I pray for the agenda set before us today. Please give us the assurance that our decisions will benefit those who live and work in our beloved town of Eddystone. It's in your name I pray. Amen. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, and justice for all. Mr. Brissette, roll call please.
Mayor Reeves.
Here.
Ms. Thompson.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Ms. Dyer.
Here.
President Stewart. Here. I do apologize for being a little bit behind schedule. However, we did have an executive session immediately prior to this meeting to discuss police staffing issues and to provide an update about the litigation matter with William Connor. Presentation this evening based on the recommendation of our acting chief of police, Ed Macheski, and Mayor Reeves, we've got the need for some part-time patrol officer help. So therefore, at this time, I would like council to make a motion for the appointment of Chris Desiderio to the position of a part-time patrol officer for the Eddystone Police Department.
Make a motion to appoint Chris Desiderio to the position of part-time patrol officer for the Eddystone Police Department.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Your honor, would you do the honor?
That's right. It's like they revolve the door down here. But you know, it's a good sign, council's doing a good job. Other people want the cops you're harming, they keep stealing away from you. You're doing a good job. Christopher.
Anybody in particular you'd like to hold the file for you, sir?
Father, sure. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Oh, before I begin, I just like to, I can't bear to get, here's your monthly finding cost check, and the boys are doing a great job out there. They're on it, man, let me tell you what. And to the residents, these policemen are really on it, I'm telling you. There's no messing around down here, President. If you had your left hand up, I'll raise your right hand if you'd have to me. Aye?
Aye.
Kristi Siderio.
Krista Siderio.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear.
I will support, defend, and obey.
I will support, defend, and obey.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
I will do my best, to my ability.
And do the best to my ability.
As a patrolman for the borough, Eddystone Borough.
As a patrolman of the A-Stone Borough.
I will say, I will discharge my duties.
And discharge my duties.
With integrity and fidelity.
With integrity and fidelity.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Good luck to you.
Congratulations. Did you sign that? Did you sign that?
Not yet, I'm gonna check it over first.
Okay.
All righty, well, there's FOP rep here. That didn't take long.
Acting chief, how'd he shoot?
Very well today.
Well enough, obviously.
Well, aside note, all the new weapons are in, holsters are in, and everybody's done a good job qualifying. Both of them qualified, definitely, all four officers.
Christopher, how'd you like our Smith &amp; Wesson M&amp;P?
Ah, loved it. Very nice.
Public forum? Nobody is on the board? Action items. Mr. Brissette can have the treasurer's report, please.
Mr. President, the balance of the general fund beginning at the month of July was $347,921.37. We had expenses over revenues for the month in an amount of $36,714.96. We had payroll expenses of $93,308.83. The balance of the general fund end the month of July 31st, 2014 was $217,825.58.
Counsel, you've heard the treasurer's report. What's your pleasure, please?
I make a motion to accept the treasurer's report as read and made part of permanent minutes.
Motion made in second. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Cash receipts and disbursements journal. This is where we need DESPO. This is where you say, I make a motion, I gotta remember how DESPO does it, I make a motion that all monies be deposited and all bills be paid. Motion made in second, and all cash receipts and disbursements. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The code enforcement report, please.
Mr. President, there were 21 inspections performed in July, 26 work orders, work stop orders violating the standard citation, 19 new work permits were issued, 16 licenses were issued. The codes department received fees in an amount of $43,047.90 in July.
Counsel, you've heard the code enforcement report for July 2014. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion to accept the code enforcement report for the month of July and made part of permanent minutes.
Motion made in second. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Mr. Brissette, the police report, please.
Mr. President, the police department had 379 calls for service in July, made 117 citations, there were six accidents, 12 reported deaths. Police department issued 33 parking citations and made 18 criminal arrests in July 2014.
And obviously, they spent a lot of time in Judge Turner's courtroom. Counsel, you've heard the police report for July 2014. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion to accept the police report as read for July 2014.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Fire report, please, Mr. Brissette.
Mr. President, the fire company had responded to 17 alarms, seven by day, 10 by night, 150 members responded to those alarms. The company took delivery of two new rescue sodas that were purchased with money donated by Eddystone Rail Company. Chief Walsh was sent to Pueblo, Colorado by Norfolk Southern Railroad along with other responders, county countrywide for a program called Cruise by Rail School for better knowledge for first responders on how to safely handle emergencies that occur by rail. Chief also noted that fire prevention week this year will be October 5th to 14th, so details will be coming.
Counsel, you've heard the fire report for the month of July 2014. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion to accept the fire report as read for July 2014.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Fire report, please, Mr. Brissette.
Mr. President, the fire company had responded to 17 alarms, seven by day, 10 by night, 150 members responded to those alarms. The company took delivery of two new rescue sodas that were purchased with money donated by Eddystone Rail Company. Chief Walsh was sent to Pueblo, Colorado by Norfolk Southern Railroad along with other responders, county countrywide for a program called Cruise by Rail School for better knowledge for first responders on how to safely handle emergencies that occur by rail. Chief also noted that fire prevention week this year will be October 5th to 14th, so details will be coming.
Counsel, you've heard the fire report for the month of July 2014. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion to accept the fire report for the month of July and made part of permanent minutes.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is the acceptance of the certified list of candidates for the position of full-time patrol officer with the borough of Eddystone. At present time, the borough of Eddystone has two vacancies for our full-time patrol officers, which necessitated the need to go through the civil service process. The borough advertised in the newspaper beginning on the 4th of July 2014, and we closed the application period on Friday, the 18th of July. At the close of business on the 18th, we had received 29 applications for full-time patrol officers. During the vetting process, to make sure that all of the candidates met the minimum requirements that was in the advertisement, there was two officers that were excluded due to lack of experience, which reduced the number of candidates down to 27, who were on the written examination. So on the 30th of July 2014, the Civil Service Commission utilized the service of William Davis to administer a written examination to the candidates of the 27 that took the written examination. All 27 achieved a passing grade of a 70 or higher, so all were able to go on to the physical agility test, which was scheduled for that Saturday, the 2nd of August. Looking at the test results, five candidates voluntarily withdrew after the written examination, which reduced the number of candidates down to 22 that took the physical agility test, and six of those candidates did not pass the physical agility test, which left the remaining 16 candidates to take the oral examination. The oral examination was conducted on the 7th of August with a panel of three folks that were all chief of policees for our surrounding borough. Those scores came in on the 7th, and on the 8th, the following day, our senior officers, acting chief Macheski, Lieutenant Pretty, Sergeant Magnumie, and Mayor Reeves reviewed all of the applications, assigned the civics points, and it is with pleasure that I announce the final rankings. The number-one candidate through the testing process with a score of 105.2, and I will note that the over 100 score is to the fact that he is receiving veterans' preference, who is Mr. Paul Gleam. So Paul Gleam is our number-one candidate with 105.2. The way the civil service rules work, counsel, is that in the event that you have a veteran who is ranked number one, that veteran is automatically entitled to that job. So at this time, I'm asking for a motion from borough council to provide Paul Gleam with a conditional offer of employment, subject to him passing both the medical evaluation as well as the psychological evaluation, which acting chief Macheski will arrange for him to take within the next week.
I'd like to make a motion for a conditional offer of employment to Paul Gleam with the understanding that he needs to fulfill the medical and psychological evaluations.
I have a motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Acting chief, if you can make the arrangements for Paul to take his medical and psychological.
Congratulations.
The ranking candidate, number two, with a score of 98.8, was another part-time Eddystone police officer, Mr. Michael Golden. Counsel, as discussed during executive session, we've been extremely satisfied with Mr. Golden's performance. We can forego the formality of a formal interview in front of council. Since we do feel comfortable, I'd like to have council make a motion for a conditional offer of employment to Mr. Michael Golden, so that he would be able to be subjected to both a medical evaluation and psychological evaluation.
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion for Michael Golden to have a...
Conditional offer.
Conditional offer of employment, continued upon, successful.
Successful medical evaluation.
And psychological.
And psychological.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Acting chief Macheski, if you can make arrangements for Michael Golden to be subjected to a medical evaluation and psychological evaluation?
Yes.
The ranking third candidate with a score of 92.5 is Shane Coyle. Candidate number four with a score of 91.9 is Matthew Bruer. Candidate number five with a score of 91.3 is Mr. Brian Bell. The borough currently has two vacancies open, and if council takes action in the near future to appoint the chief of police through our ranks, that would open up a third position. Since these officers, we are not familiar with these candidates, at this time, I would make a recommendation that council does an oral interview with these three officers to fill the third slot. If we could check our calendars. How about next Monday, the 18th? We'll have an executive session of council on the 18th, 6 o'clock?
Yep.
That'll give us the opportunity to interview the three officers. If council was to feel comfortable enough with making a decision that evening, we would go into Sunshine and actually have a special media, meeting of council, so that we would be able to make that conditional offer of employment for the third candidate as well. So Mr. Brissette, if you can advertise in the paper that there would be a meeting, special meeting of council, on the 18th of August?
7:00 P.M.
7:00 P.M.
Yep. 7:00 or 7:00?
7:00. 6 for the executive session for the interview, 7 for the Sunshine. The remaining candidates, ranking candidate number six with a score of 90.4 is Mark Tancredi. Candidate number seven with an overall score of 88.5 is Russell Weaverling. Candidate number eight with a score of 87.3 is Michael Murphy. Candidate number nine with a score of 86.6 is Joseph McCreary. Candidate number 10 with a score of 85.8 is Ishmael Johnson. Candidate number 11 with a score of 83.1 is Michael Greerly. Candidate number 12 with a score of 82.4 is David Simcox. Candidate number 13 with a score of 80 is David Voorhees. Candidate number 14, and that is just based on alphabetical order, with an identical score of 80.0 is Patrick Gardner. Candidate number 15 with a score of 79.5 is Christopher Signor. And candidate number 16 with a score of 75.2 is James Brawley. Tim, if you could have Tina post the final rankings on the front door, and then what I will do is send out the email to all of the candidates to let them know where their scores were. So at this time, I would make a, entertain a motion from council to accept the certified list of candidates, which was approved by the Civil Service Commission prior to this meeting, for the certified list of candidates for the position of patrol officer with the borough of Eddystone Police Department.
I make a motion to accept the certification, to accept the certified list of candidates for the position of full-time police officer.
Second.
Motion made in second to accept the certified list. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Acting chief Macheski, can you brief council on the motion to approve the purchase and/or lease of a new police cruiser from Vidian Dodge?
Yes, I'd like to advise council that our fleet is aging and in need of repair, we need a replacement vehicle. I'd like to get a 2014 Dodge Charger all-wheel-drive police package. Recommend that you go Vidian Dodge, price of $25,377, which is the middle bid. Carmen Jeep was $25,295, and buyer Jeep was $25,414.23.
Can you give a quick overview on the, how the lease purchase works?
Yeah, there is a lease purchase that goes on, it would be just like $6,900 a year for four years, extended to four-year lease, the borough pays a dollar, and we'll have ownership review. In lieu of putting out the $25,377 in one time.
And that would come through the service, the finance service provider from Vidian?
Yes, it would.
Counsel, is there any questions regarding the need to purchase a vehicle or the method of purchase through Vidian Dodge? With no questions, can I have a motion, please, to give Chief Macheski the authorization to move forward with the purchase of a new police cruiser, 2014 Dodge Charger all-wheel-drive with the police package, which is through a CoStarz bid in the amount of $25,377, which would be leased over, that's four equal payments?
Yes, four equal payments.
I make a motion for council to approve chief, acting chief Macheski, to start the process for lease purchase of a Dodge Charger in the amount of $6,991.68 per year for a total cost of $25,377.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Chief, if you could move forward. What's, what's the lead time on, on obtaining the vehicle?
About 6 to 8 weeks.
We have time, I'm assuming? We're gonna have to get it outfitted with lights and...
Yes.
Consoles and...
We're going to...
Keep the bad guys in the backseat stuff?
Yes, we want security, bit of police equipment in the back.
So we can, we can table that until?
Table that next month.
Next month's meeting?
Yes.
Okay, and we'll get some additional information on what's the cost of the outfit, the package, and...
That's correct. I'll try to get a good deal on the pricing and the equipment. We're also gonna recycle most of the equipment. I don't know what to do.
Mayor, have we made a decision on markings yet, whether or not we're gonna mark them similar to what we...
I believe we have.
Yeah, we discussed it. The mayor and members of departments discussed about changing up the look of the department. But with the vehicles, one of the ideas was to change the paint on the vehicles, however, that would be $1,000 per car, and I feel that would be a needless expenditure at this time. We did decide to change up the graphic design some. We have a graphic designer working on a couple more mock-ups for us, we decide on, because it's funny, it's time, 6 to 8 weeks, decide what we want, have a review before we buy it to you.
So you can have some mock-ups that are available for borough council for their review at next meeting?
Yeah, before the 18th.
Perfect. That is our next meeting, isn't it? There's been some discussion about going on a summer schedule for borough employees. The summer has just about come to a close, believe it or not, and we do have a draft policy for providing a summer schedule for next year. Would essentially be allowing borough employees, this would be non-uniformed employees, to work a schedule consisting of nine hours, Monday through Thursday, which would be 36 hours and then a half a day on Friday, so it'd be making up your 40 at that time. There's still some language that needs to be written into the policy, so at this time, we will table the, the motion to adopt the summer policy until next month. Am I missing anything?
Non-uniform.
Non-uniform. We got the cell phone stipend next.
Okay.
There's also a policy that's being drafted, was circulated beginning this evening, for the adoption of a cellphone stipend policy. Essentially, the idea is to make sure that all of the officials of the borough have cellphone communication at all times, also setting up that cellphone so that these are smartphones that have access to the internet, as well as access to the borough emails, so that when we got code red up and running, that everybody is getting the same information at the same time. It's also, those numbers would be used as part of our emergency management planning. We've got some language that needs to be written, written in there for some electronic, what was the terminology that you used?
Electronic communication.
Electronic communication, just to make sure that we've got the proper language written in there and to give Sean Duffy an opportunity to review it from our council side. So we will also be tabling that motion until next council meeting in September.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
I'm just, is this a stipend, so that this would subsidize what council members or borough employees are paying for their private phones?
That is correct. What we're looking at is, is we're looking at getting away from having a borough-administered cellphone account.
Uh-huh.
It would be a, what I call BYOD, bring your own device. Most, everybody has a cellphone, and, you know, what the borough of Eddystone would be doing is, is to pay select officials for the use of their cellphone. We're not looking at making all of borough council having cellphones. What we're looking at is, is in, you know, my particular cases, I'm speaking with acting chief Macheski on a daily basis, I am calling his personal cellphone, and I'm racking up his minutes. I'm also tapping into his data plan by sending, you know, numerous emails throughout the day and week or month. So what we're looking at is, is folks like the mayor, the chief, the lieutenant, the chief of fire, our code enforcement officer, our highway superintendent, the borough council president, our fire marshal slash emergency management coordinator, these would be the individuals that would be qualified or eligible to receive the stipend.
I think it's, I think it's fair that the individual should not have to pick up the costs that are associated with the borough business. So I, I agree with that concept. One thing I'm concerned about is whether if, if there but going to be public monies going into these things, is there, right now, we don't have contact phone numbers for members of council. All we have is the general borough number, and that's not really a very efficient way. You know, and I know that even if, there are a number of free services that would allow you to leave phone messages, even if you had a Google number or something like that. It would be good if, if, if the voters, the residents, who want to contact a particular member of council, would have a number that they could call and at least leave a message for that, for that individual.
I believe we could set that up through the phone system.
Well, that would...
I believe that we have capacity in our current phone system that we've built up on an extension out for individual members of council, that you'd be able to leave a phone message for, and then it would be the individual member of council's responsibility to retrieve the messages, whether they want to come to the office to do it, or whether they wanted to call in remotely just to get their messages. We've also had a move towards having all of the borough council members having email addresses with the eddystoneboro.org. That capability exists. There are certain members of borough council that have taken the steps to make sure that they have an Eddystone address. There are certain members of council that have not. When we do launch the website, when we do have code red up and running, that is something that where, you know, everybody's going to be, makes, you know, make sure that we've got the Eddystone Borough address up and running. So the, the lines of communication are open there.
Okay, well, it would, some of this sounds like a little bit last century to me, just, because it's, it's so easy now to, again, I'll use the, the example of, of a Google voice number, where anyone could get the number, there's no charge for it. You can set it up in a number of different ways. It will send you an email or a text message to, to an email address with a transcript of what was left on the voice recording, or it can also have a voice message that you can pick up. If you call that number, and that number's assigned to an individual, you know that that, that call went through to them one way or another. The thought of somebody, the thought of calling the main number in the office, right now, if you wanted, I don't know how many extensions there are, when you call in, it, it says you could spell the name of the person you want to speak to. I don't know how many names you would spell before you found, we don't know who's on, because there's no directory or anything. If, right, right now, the, you know, the idea of, of leaving a message and somebody having to come into the borough hall to retrieve that message is, is, is totally ridiculous in this day and age.
I believe the system that we have is a voice-over IP system, which is essentially, you can, you can set up, just like you talked about, to where the council members would have, you know, whether it's a text message or an email that's sent, that says you have a message waiting.
Okay. Because even with, even with the email addresses, just, just, just to be clear, any email address you have, you can forward a copy to another email address. So that even with your eddystoneboro.org email addresses that you're setting up, you can set that so it goes to, you know, someone's personal email, and they'll always get that, a copy of that message forwarded to them, so that they don't really need to even check the eddystoneboro.org email address to get their email. You know, so I'm only, I'm only saying this as, that my general view on this is that we need to keep increasing the availability... saying this is that my general view on this is that we need to keep increasing the availability of, of the people who work in the Borough to the residents of the Borough. Because, you know, I, I personally keep hearing from people that don't know how to contact somebody, or they say they left a message and they didn't get a call back, and things like this. So let's just make sure everything we're doing here
I am all in favor of accessibility, and we are making strides towards providing every Borough resident the opportunity to send a message via email to any council member. You know, also making sure that we've got email addresses set up for, you know, the Borough employees. All the police officers have email addresses. All the police officers, believe it or not, have their own extension. So if you wanted to speak to Lieutenant Pretty, you can call the police department. You can dial in his extension and leave a message for Lieutenant Pretty. With that being said, we also have to be very careful to make sure that the lines of authority are followed. I certainly do not want Glenn Wilson to be making a phone call to Gene Scott to provide direction on what needs to be done. You know, the grass over at Lighthouse Hall needs to be cut.
Right.
That direction comes through the committee, you know. So, so we're getting that accessibility. We're getting, you know, the lines of communication opened up. And, you know, we'll continue to work towards making sure that if you've got a question or a concern, you can reach out and your concern would be answered. You know, I'd love to say within a 24-hour period of time is all, it's not an emergency.
Well, the example you used is very, very clearly, I agree with you, like that. Elected members of council are different than employees of the Borough in terms of them needing to be accessible to people. You shouldn't have to go through three layers of communication in order to get a response from somebody on council.
Right. I agree.
So that's all I'm saying.
I agree. And we're, we're getting there. Ms. Callan, do you have a question?
Yeah. I'm a crossing guard. And we don't have phones at all. We have to use our own in case of emergency. So do we continue using our own personal phone for that?
At this time, yes.
Okay.
Bear with me for just one second. I'm just trying to find an old email. One topic that's not on the agenda, and it's just kind of cleaning up some of the past business, is we had some discussions, Ms. Thompson, regarding the procedures to follow when one abstains from a vote. You know, as Borough Council members, we are charged with the responsibility of voting yes or voting no on issues. However, there are times in which there is a conflict that would preclude us from casting that yes or no. And at that time, the council members have the opportunity to abstain. But when we abstain from a vote, what we're looking at is, we're looking at a public disclosure of the reason why you are abstaining from the vote, followed by a memorandum of abstention, which is filed with the, with this Borough manager. Just going back and looking at the voting history, on October 14th, 2013, there was a motion on the table for council to appoint Paul McNichol as the heart and lung hearing officer. And you got abstained from that motion. And I believe you are prepared to give a reason for the abstention.
Sure. I'll give all three.
Okay. Well, then we'll go through all three, and then, is it the same for all three?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So we had the 14th of October, 2013, the motion to appoint Paul McNichol as the heart and lung hearing officer. On the 9th of December, 2013, there was a motion to discharge William Connor as the chief of police. And on the 12th of May, 2014, there was a motion to appoint myself, William Stewart, as the liaison to Labor Council for the litigation with William Connor. Of those three, you abstained on all three votes.
Okay. On October 14th, 2013, regarding appointment of Paul McNichol for heart and lung hearing, to appoint Paul McNichol as the heart and lung hearing officer, I abstained. December 9th, 2013, I abstained from the discharge of William Connor. On May 12th, 2014, I abstained from the appointment of William Stewart as liaison to Labor Council for Connor litigation. I abstained due to the fact that William Connor is my boyfriend. That's it. Ten.
Any other new business with council?
I'd like to, one of the motions, to bring pay raises to the fire company pay drivers. Be tabled for this month or next month?
Okay. With, currently, we have paid drivers and paid EMTs, correct?
EMTs, I think there's five part-time and EMTs. It's been about seven years since they've had a raise. And I think it's time for them to, to get a raise. And this is part-time. Some work one day, some work two days. EMTs, and when the whistle blows. So we'll get all our ducks lined up, find out what everybody's doing, and we'll do a pay raise in September.
That was my next question, because we have not done the non-uniform staff as of yet. Traditionally, Councilwoman Gross, what we do is, when we do pay raises, a lot of times, it is going to be at the same time that the officers get a pay raise.
What happens if officers gotten pay raises in the past seven years?
Yes.
Okay, they haven't. Well, everyone else is getting a pay raise. The element that's not getting a pay raise is the fire company. And I think it's, it's seven years.
Oh, I don't know that. The only thing I would suggest is maybe, because we're gonna get into budgeting soon.
All right.
Just, this would probably be most constructive, just to do it in the context of our budget, because we didn't, definitely didn't budget for this thing.
Right, but it's happened here too, yeah.
Right. But I mean, now you're elected, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I understand that.
And I respect what you're saying, but I'm just saying, like, financially, we definitely didn't budget to pay extra payroll, other than what was budgeted for.
The first time they would receive a pay raise, wouldn't be till Monday.
Well, whenever council
So it would be, it would be if we were to do it through the budgetary process, which occurs October to November timeframe. We would be able to budget it so that it would be a January 1st
Okay.
Pay raise for the part-time EMTs, as well as the part-time drivers. But as Councilwoman Thompson has pointed out, we have also not taken action as council to do the non-uniformed employees, such as our Borough clerk, as well as the highway superintendent.
He did do that, yes.
That was January, right?
Yeah, so they
I think July started.
July.
It started recent.
My, my concern is that a seven-year lapse has occurred.
Oh, I hear you. I hear you. Counsel, of course, votes, but I'm just saying, this year too, we've had unexpected things.
I understand that. I do. I just don't want this to get lost. I want this to be a priority.
Yeah.
Okay. I had my say.
Ten minutes. Did you say July this year, non-uniformed increases?
I can confirm it, but I think, I know it was this summer.
I thought, that's what I was gonna ask.
It, it just started. I think it was
Because we gotta look at the crossing guards as well. Crossing guards haven't gotten a raise in a few years. You know, the Borough sanitation workers haven't gotten a raise. So, my recommendation's gonna be, is, is let's start gathering information.
Sure.
Let's make it part of the budgetary process and make it effective, you know, first of January. Upcoming public meetings and events. On the 30th of September, at 6 o'clock, we've got a police and emergency management meeting. On, following that meeting at 7 o'clock, is the highway and sanitation meeting. General updates, resolution on the Young Lungs at Play program. Councilman Patterson and Solicitor Duffy, if you could give us an update of where we stand with getting that resolution. I believe it's, hasn't been advertised yet, correct?
No, it's, it's gonna be advertised for next month. We had to get all the addresses, draw the five marks to Borough, and get the notice ready to go out for advertisement.
The website development and Code Red registration. Received an email today from Hoff Communications. We are putting the final touches on the website. We hope to have that up and running here within the next week or two. Also, received an email from the folks at Code Red. And I'm looking over at Acting Chief Wacheski, if we could put it on the calendar. Is Tina still with us in the back?
Yes.
They are requesting that we meet for the online training session on Thursday, the 14th of August, at 12 noon. And I will forward you, they've got a, basically, it's a join the meeting. It's like a go-to-meeting link, very similar to what we logged into when we got the orientation about Code Red. And that will get us to the point where we're actually live. What the folks from Code Red have done so far is, we are set up. They've drawn our geographical boundaries. They've captured all of the landline phone numbers. They've captured the database of any cellphone numbers that they have that are assigned to this region. And, you know, the next phase is to actually open up the registration to Borough residents, to where you'd be able to log in, type in your information, give your preference, whether or not you wanted a notification email to you, sent to your text message, or sent to your voicemail. And then you have the option where you can just say, I just want emergency stuff, or I want both emergency and non-emergency. So stay tuned, that's coming in the weeks to come. Recycling report. There's a implementation grant that's due on the 14th. So I've got a meeting with the DEP tomorrow afternoon. We've received the quotations, and I believe have all of the information that the DEP needs for us to submit the grant. It's just a matter of compiling everything. So it's gonna be a long night to get the grant stuff done. But hopefully, I got a high level of confidence, we're submitting for a grant on the 14th. Roundtable. I'm gonna start to my left. Councilman Donahue.
I'm good.
Councilwoman Gross.
I'm good.
Councilman Patterson.
I'd just like to say thank you for Judge Turner coming out again.
It was always a pleasure to come down here.
We're gonna get you a chair.
Pencil myself in for the 8th next month, I guess?
You know, you thought I was gonna reset you, and like, Al. And the reason why we're holding you captive is because we're gonna spring on you what's coming up on the 8th.
Also, congrats to the officers. I'd like to say thank you to Jackie Callan. She headed up our summer camp this year. Her with all the employees did a wonderful job. Nothing but great reviews about it. And I just wanted to say thank you.
Jackie, you wanna say a few words?
This year, I was asked to do summer camp, and I refused at first. So I had all the council come to me and ask me that was interested in me doing it. It was, it was a wonderful time. It was nothing but fun camp this year. We didn't have to do things that the kids didn't want to do. It was great. The last day of camp, well, this year, we made our own cupcakes, and we decorated them with different things to make them look like clowns, different things. It wasn't just put icing on air and sprinkles. They had fun doing it. But we couldn't display them because they really wanted to eat them. So we had pictures taken of them. So it was really great. And the tie dye in T-shirts was a hit. My favorite was the kindergarten and first grades. They'd never done it before. For them to get tie dye in a bottle and spray it on a shirt, they were so excited because it did colors. And then my last day of camp, it was the best ending of camp I ever went to. We had all the council there this year. First time a mayor ever came to a summer camp ending. And I had the police off, well, the police officers came to me and wanted to help me do something for the kids. So they came and they cooked for us. They cooked hot dogs, hamburgers, they had vanilla. It was a blast. Then the fire company came with a big hose with a sprinkler. They didn't have one sprinkler, they had two. They were supposed to start at 2:15 and end at quarter to 3. The fire company boys, they were young, the volunteers, turned that sprinkler on at 1:30 and it didn't shut off till 20:03. It was wonderful. And I want to thank you all for letting me have full range of everything and not bothering in my business when I was doing camp. Not there every two minutes, oh, what are you doing? Do you need testing? You know, I did it the way I wanted it. It was great. I had great counselors. Once they found out that I was the chief and not the Indian. So we had a wonderful time. And thank you, Ed, especially you. You were wonderful to me.
It was the first time I ever saw a spatula with a pair of handcuffs engraved in it. Police insignias on anything you want to get police insignias on. Mr. Wilson.
I just wanted, while, while we're thanking Jackie for things, I just wanted to recognize her service as judge of elections in the North Ward for many years. I, I think it was 14 years. I don't know
Yes.
for sure. But that's sometimes kind of a thankless job, but it's an important civic duty that she did for all those times. And it's a long day. And between doing that and being a fixture around the town, you know, doing the crossing guard work and everything, I think she's, if we ever have a, like, a model citizen award, I think that Jackie should be on that list.
Councilwoman Thompson.
Thank you to Judge Turner coming out. Also, congratulations to Paul Gleene, Mike Golden, and Chris Dezzedaria. I do have a few things. I was questioning whether or not we had the final hall rental agreement that was completed. I know there was a paragraph in there about the liquor being sold by the Borough that we were going to check into. But I don't believe we ever heard back, and I know that the hall rentals are taking place. So I'm just curious as to where we are with that.
What we've done thus far with the hall rentals, because we do not have a formal liquor policy, nor do we have a liquor license, there has been a bring-your-own-alcohol scenario. So every time that we've done a rental, it has been the responsibility of the leaser to bring their alcohol. And we've got language that's in the contract that they need to self-police themselves.
Can we see a copy of that?
Sure.
That was a, okay. The second thing has to do with Walmart, Ed, your favorite place. There's been a lot of problems that, you know, I live right on Simpson. So I don't know what's going on recently. But there's, I guess it's theft that's taking place, because there's a lot of shopping carts being left there. 13th, they're being left on 13th, they're being left on Simpson in the middle of the street, on the sidewalk. And I push them back. But more recently, what's been happening is there's a four-door cylinder Hyundai, has no plates on it. What happens is someone pushes the cart out of the parking lot. The car pulls up and they load the car with TVs. And then it takes off. It has no plates. But we called the police. They didn't arrive in time. And I didn't want to chase them. So I just want to make you aware that that is happening. It's happened three times already.
Yeah, I'm familiar with the last incident that occurred of working that day. We're on our call, we're not coming in. So when we got there, I was, I think Paula was actually taking a report. We're looking out for that vehicle. We did try to check the camera system for those individuals that were described, and we didn't see them. We see them purchase things, but we didn't see them taking anything. We'll keep an eye on the area. If you do see the vehicle, give us a call. The guys may not pay attention if they're in an area and see that vehicle or vehicle without a license placed. Obviously, the traffic's not, so.
They're very confrontational. We did ask them to put the cart back, but that didn't go very well.
We'll get them.
Okay. And the last thing I had is, when we do pursue a new chief, I would just like to recommend for budgetary purposes that prior to voting, we discuss salary benefits, schedule, have that all ironed out, so that we can have everything in writing part of it. That's it.
On the, just to comment on the, on the appointment of the chief, and I personally feel it's, you know, important for Borough Council to take action sooner rather than later on later, on appointing a chief permanently here in this borough. We've taken action to promote a sergeant, we've taken action to promote a lieutenant. It's, it's important, we're actually taking action, next council meeting, to hire at least two full-time patrol officers, you know, it's important to have rank structure in the police department, and, you know, Ed has done an outstanding job over the last two-plus years, sitting in the role of acting, and, you know, regardless of, you know, whether it's Acting Chief Macheski, or the other officer that's in consideration right now is Joseph Pretty, who was our lieutenant, this borough is blessed with the fact that we've got two individuals that would make outstanding candidates to, for the chief of police position. And, and I believe that no matter how council goes, there's a commitment amongst the men, that, you know, the lieutenant, the sergeant, and the chief are all committed to work together, and, you know, do what's best for this borough, regardless of whether or not they hold the title. So, you know, it's council, you know, we, we need to come together, and we need to make a decision of how we're moving forward, so that we can appoint the next chief. And then, and only then, I believe that we'd be able to really roll up our sleeves and address some of the issues that have been plaguing this borough. That way, my words carefully, Councilwoman Gross.
Good thing you do.
Any other things to, Mayor Reese?
I have several things. One, Eddie Fisani resigned as a part-time officer, as he has been the, or the township manager, Redley, and he's in charge of the police town, so he had to resign, was their policy procedure. I was, I did talk to Ed, and he sent me down this ordinance they have up there. We have a couple, a couple buildings that were burned out, one back on 2008, still abandoned and done up, and the creek bank, people want to know what's going on. The borough does not have an insurance policy where, when the insurance claim is paid, percentage of money goes in the borough to be held. I think the borough should look into something like that here, if you can pass this over to, that way, we can hold leverage on everybody, so that we can, if they don't do anything with it in a certain amount of time, we can take action.
Right.
I think that's something the borough should look into.
So essentially, what this is, this is an ordinance or a code that's over Ridley Township?
Right, that Redley has on their, on their books right now.
So, in the event that you've got a establishment that is burned out, when the insurance payment goes forward, a certain percentage of that is escrow?
Escrow.
And held, and held by the municipality?
Right.
That's great.
Is this your only copy?
No, you can, you can have that.
I'm going to make sure that our solicitor has a copy as well to take with him.
They also, they also have, in, in the same thing there, if, once the money's turned over to the township or whatever, if there's any claims like unpaid tax or whatever, they'll deduct that out, all of that money also.
Okay.
Number two. Greg Barnes from Dale and Dyne Street, he stopped me one day, and he was telling me the house in Level 91, East Dyne Street. They're throwing their trash, their garbage out in the alleyway, in little Walmart shopping bags. The boroughs, everything are getting into it, tearing it up, these rabbits want to start coming up. So I'm going to take a look at that, Dallas or whoever.
We, you know, but before you go, we have an ordinance that very specifically states the method to which you're supposed to be putting your.
Containers.
Containers out, and.
Okay, I was aware of that.
Yeah, and what, you know, I, I always go back to the website to let everybody know that, you know, there's your opportunity, that's, you know, there's a section of the website that specifically details, you know, the procedures to be followed with trash collection, and, you know, Gina has got an orange sticky pad of stickers that he can, that sticks to, you know, whether it's a container that's broken, whether it's a container that's too heavy, whether it's a container that's full of materials that we don't take as part of the borough, so, you know, it's a matter of Gina working very closely with Dallas, when Gina sees the problem, then you got to have Dallas come in and do the enforcement. Okay?
Or you can have the person that's making the statements, do your file, complain with them.
Well, he asked me about it, I told him, I, he was, said that he would be at the meeting tonight, but he didn't make it, so I told him I would bring it up for him, that's why I brought it up. One of, two other things. One, Bill Connors came to the borough several months ago with a right to know on information he requested. It took Tina and Kathy several days to get all the stuff together. I guess it was a stack of papers about this deed, and it looked waiting to be picked up with a bill. He's never picked up as of this date. I think the borough should send him the bill, a request payment, for his right to know that he requested. If he doesn't pay the bill in a reasonable amount of time, I think the borough should put a lien against his property, or whatever they can do.
Mr. Presente, how much was the, the copy fee? I think it was nominal.
Ninety, no, it was close to $100.
Hundred dollars?
Ninety-nine, cool, $99 and change, but it was just under $100.
Can you prepare a letter to just ask what the status of whether or not he's going to be picking up his girls?
Last thing, I was given this here, and I was asked to bring this up. It said, 2014 Delco appreciation night at PPL Park for Delaware County employees. If council would like to take action on that, or whatever, I was asked to bring that up. It's $38 tickets, but the price would be $20, if they want to take their employees.
Oh, soccer.
Soccer.
Yeah.
Action Chief Macheski.
Yes, I just want to say, it was a privilege to be part of the July 30th picnic for the kids, and it's something that I think the department should continue in the future, encourage all residents to participate when they can. There's a lot of children there, and they're all very happy, having a good time, that's what it's all about. Blue Jacket did an outstanding job with the kids. The other thing I want to say is the new weapons that we purchased are in service, the officers have been trained, majority officers have been trained, that's all working out very well. And I'm glad to hear of the potential employment of Officer Gleam and Officer Golden. Over the last couple of years, we've had some officers leave, have left some gaps in our schedule, and they've been over backwards and filled the schedule for us, to make sure no officer worked by themselves. They're very, two really hard-working officers, that's all.
I don't want to violate any HIPAA laws or anything, but we did have an officer that was injured on duty, Ryan Sweet. I believe that he is back to work in full capacity now, so, you know, we certainly thank Ryan for getting back to work as quickly as he, as he did. I think he was out for, what, a couple of weeks?
Yes, he was. He was out for two weeks.
Two weeks? That's not too bad for.
Yeah.
I spoke to him on the phone, he was in good spirits, I didn't know if it was the pain medication or not, and he says, "I'll be right back to work, don't worry, don't you worry, I'll be back by the end of the month."
The active criminal rush list, by the way.
Okay.
Are we still going to get the canine dog from Vidian?
Yes. Yes, we're moving forward quickly. That's probably the best way to say it, is we're moving forward very quickly. Action Chief Macheski, I did have, was given a note that Ms. Christine Roy is looking for permission to have a party in the back alley, Long Ashland Avenue. The party is scheduled for the 30th of August, and essentially, what they're requesting is permission to block the back alley between M and G and House 742.
They do have signatures from neighbors.
We'll take it on advisement, we'll double-check the burr codes, check out the area.
Okay. It is the 30th of August, and it is a 12th birthday party, so I need to get back to her as quickly as possible, so, I'm not disappointing the little girl. It's bad enough I mispronounced her name previously, and I have not lived that down for a long time. Then I misspelled the first name on the plaque, when she volunteered for the youth aid panel, and if I was to have to tell them they can't have their birthday party, it would just not bode well for me, for four years.
And we live on the same street, huh?
Yes, we live on the same street. I'll be, I'll be getting Walmart bags thrown down my alley.
I would introduce you next door.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, Ms. Roy, I'll get back to you as quick as Judge Turner, we certainly appreciate your attendance. We do have you on schedule again for the 8th of September, and considering the fact that we would be hiring at least two full-time officers, if Borough Council was able to make a decision at our special meeting on the 18th, we would potentially be hiring three full-time officers, and that would be contingent upon us moving forward with appointing a chief of police. So considering that we may have four appointments, I'll get you a throat lozenger, I'll get you a bottle of water.
We're good throat, not a problem.
And, we may not have a big enough room.
You're right, you're right about that.
So, so with that being said, we may need to seriously consider holding the next council meeting down at Joe Hughes Memorial Hall.
Okay, you'll let me know before we advertise.
Yes.
I'll wait to hear from you.
Yes, what's, what's our timeline for advertisement?
Special, it's 24 hours.
24 hours?
Did you say 72, Stan?
Okay. It's not like, it's not like we wouldn't be able to walk down to the fire hall if someone comes up here to Borough Hall and sees the, the note on the door, but I just want to make sure that we, you know, if we do decide to change venues, which is a distinct possibility, we would have our meeting down at Joe Hughes Memorial Hall, which would have a chance to showcase the, the hall for rentals.
By the way, I have a copy of the liquor code on my car, I'll give you for your questions about that.
Good job, good job.
That'll settle the problem, I got it right in my car.
You come prepared. Free advice.
I pass along my congratulations to Christopher Desiderio for his appointment as a part-time officer, and certainly looking forward to working with Borough Council over the next couple of weeks, as we move forward with not only making decisions on appointment of the next chief of police, but also finalizing the, the appointments for the full-time patrol officers, so, lots of, lots of good things coming here for the September meeting. May I have a, a motion to adjourn, please?
Sure.
Meeting adjourned.